Oh, I'm running out of battery. I died. These things must have a serious draw.
It's an IT situation we're addressing. We'll be with you momentarily. You gotta wait for the station break or something.
We're gonna have to resort to the old-fashioned way.
There you go.
No, no, just go grab some.
Hello? Hello? Oh, slide? Don't start that Son of Sam stuff. Okay, now you have to get yours ready.
Yep, I'm ready.
Good evening and welcome. I call to order the September 6th, 2023 meeting of the Mayor and Alderman in Mont Eagle, Tennessee. We'll start with prayer. Chaplain Van Zandt, thank you. We will rise. Y'all will pray with me. Almighty God, our Heavenly Father, send down upon these who hold office in this town the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. We especially hold up to you, our first responders, and all those who work for the town. Watch over them and keep them safe. And we ask a special blessing of comfort on Bubba's family. It is in the name of the Lord Jesus that we pray. Amen.
Thank you.
Go ring.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, on the attendant roll call, please. City recorder?
Doreen, here.
Jessica.
Here.
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 Here. You have before you the minutes of the previous meeting. I entertain a motion to accept those minutes are submitted.
I'm moving to make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion, additions, or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minister approved. Citizens' comments. Is there anyone that wish to make a comment now as opposed to at the end of the meeting? We give you an opportunity on both ends of the meeting, so thank you. Mayor's Communications, that's me. First item of business is an emergency situation that was brought to my attention yesterday. We have an estimate, someone that's been doing our tree work for several years now, after Mr. Fripp's retired. It's a pretty extensive tree, 50-inch diameter base, two trunks high over buildings and sheds, and the price for removal, chipping, crane work, et cetera, it comes to $4,500. Because property is involved and a liability, I think, to the owner and the town, I would like to accept a motion, and then if there's discussion, we can do that. So $4,500 to remove the tree scenario in town that is a serious threat to the road as well as buildings in the neighborhood.
Where is the tree?
Where is it?
It's on the North Bluff Circle area.
And it's our tree?
Yes. For what we can tell by that, yes. Between the fence and the road and all of that area.
Where is it on North Bluff Circle?
In line with a little side road. Yeah, that's a, well, it's a bluff circle off of North Bluff Drive, I guess is the best way to explain it. It's off to the left as you go down North Bluff Drive.
So is it on North Bluff Drive or North Bluff Circle?
The circle. I'm just trying to locate the area.
Do we know what the right-of-way at North Bluff Circle is? I don't think it's very much at all.
It's not very much at all.
It's not, but it's in the road, nearly. It's about where Burbin used to live, when his godbrother was there and that.
So on down toward the end?
No, he don't live on the end anymore. He moved up into Brick House.
Okay.
So it is city property that it's on?
It's gotta be. I mean, the edge of it's on the shoulder of the roads. I mean, it's a one-lane road, don't get me wrong, but you don't have a ditch or nothing, and it's, yeah.
And it's a city road, so?
Yeah, and it's something that if you don't take care of it first week, you're gonna be probably buying a building and garage.
Then I make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that motion? If it wasn't important, I would not have brought it about until late date. But in looking at it, it was something that has to be done.
I appreciate the importance of it, but I was wondering, just as we were just learning of it, would Sequoia Valley not be willing to undertake some of that with the services they they, or is that, is that out of their deal?
That's what it is.
Okay.
Good point.
So there's no overhead electric there?
I'm good.
Yeah, there's gotta be, but I'm not sure it runs along the road or comes off of
Right.
North Bluff. I'm not really sure. I didn't pay attention.
Well, that's probably worth looking at, though, before we turn somebody.
And you can look at the tree. I mean, it's, there's something that's gotta be done before, like, you have to buy a garage and a shed and...
But if we're gonna have 15 people looking into it, see if it needs to be cut or who's responsible for it, let's just go ahead and cut it before it does something that it shouldn't do. Let's just do it.
Okay. No further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the other thing is events. Doing both calendar events, there's going to be a September 11th Remembrance Service, which is next Monday. It'll be at the 911 Building. Doreen will give you more details when she explains the timetable and all of that. But we are remembering the day. I think that's about it for Mayor's discussions at this time. So let's move forward. Police Department report.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Ladies and gentlemen. Pardon me, I left off 7:15 to 8:15 up there, so I kinda sketch it in here. As you can see, the numbers are going down, which we want to happen. So the total calls from our 911 dispatch center was 364. Several months ago, that was in the 500s. The total number of reports taken, 30, that's going down. The total number of citations written, happily, going down at 45. If you guys remember, several months ago, that was close to 80, so. And then, of course, traffic stops. The total number of traffic stops we had, as a department as a whole, was 150 traffic stops. Okay, all that's, there are various reasons. The total number of arrests, which is fantastic, are going down, which was nine. Now, most of those nine arrests were due to narcotics arrests, okay, which were made by the K-9 unit. The total, the breakdown of these reports was followed. 23 of the reports are from arrests, vandalism, theft, warrants, and miscellaneous reports, okay? The other seven are, which this number really just blows my mind. We only had seven vehicle crashes. The month prior to that, we had almost 30. So, and the reason for that, I really truly still believe, is the police presence. So luckily, those are coming down, and I'm hoping next month it's, I don't expect it to be any lower, but I would love to see seven more. So that's, that's a good thing. And of course, you know, I'm very pleased to see that the total number of vehicle crashes, like I said, it went down. This is a direct reflection of the traffic control and the officers being proactive. So, and as you can see, the total number of citations have gradually went down. So, and this is also what we wanna see. As always, we wanna say thank you to the citizens, to you guys, to the board of Mont Eagle for the continued support and belief in the Police Department. Now, we do have a few scam alerts, okay? We don't have any here in Mont Eagle, but, you know, I do talk to other agencies. So some of the scam alerts that could possibly come here that I've been made aware of, the number one scam alert is gonna be calling citizens and pretending that they belong with the Police Department and state that you have a citation or you have a warrant that you must pay. You must pay now. We, law enforcement does not do that. They'll show up at your door, knock on your door, and say, hey, you got a warrant to go to jail. So it's directly reflecting our elders. So I just wanna let, let you guys know that there is a scam out there that, you know, luckily, Mont Eagle, we haven't had any reports of that, but it is out there. So if you wanna tell your family and friends, it'd be much appreciated. The second scam, it's an IRS. They're posing as IRS agents that you must pay me X amount of dollars today, or we're gonna come and send someone to have you arrested. IRS does not do that. They never have done that, and they never will do that. However, the scam is going. We haven't had it here. Not to say that we won't, but just as public safety, if we could just let our citizens and elders know that that scam is around or nears, there it is, okay? That's all I have.
The Grundy County Sheriff's Department's been in the news lately. Can you tell me, is that stressed your department or left you in any kind of lurch?
You know, we have all seen what was in the Grundy County Sheriff's Department, and does it stress everyone? It does. It really does. Has it affected our department? No, it hasn't affected our department. You know, we, we do what we need to do to protect and maintain civility, especially for the citizens of Mont Eagle. So as far as a direct reflection on our department, it has not.
Any other questions on the Police Department?
William, I am ashamed to say what I'm fixing to say. I do not have a clue who our police officers are or how many we have.
Well, I will get you all those names and tell you how many we have.
If we could get them just every now and then to show up at a city meeting and just introduce themselves?
Okay.
I don't have a clue, and I'm really ashamed to say that, but I really don't.
Not all at once, maybe one at a time.
Right.
How many do we have?
We have seven total, seven total, as included myself, so.
Is that a good number?
Preferably, we, obviously, we would like to have a total of 10. 10 would be the optimal number, and that's gonna have 365 days coverage, but, you know, we're working on it, so.
Okay. How has it worked out? Would you have an open house in the police station during the week?
Wonderful.
People are coming?
We do, yeah. On an average, we'd probably get between 12 and 15 people. They come in today. I've had nine. So, so, and some complaints, but most, you know, are, and not about the Police Department, so. But, but yeah, we, we have plenty of people come in, and it's a welcomed, and it's welcomed. I enjoy people coming in. Just makes me have to get the office cleaned up.
Yeah, I think to follow up on Doreen's point, I think we talked about a couple months ago, maybe bringing in the new officers as they're hired at the next meeting. That was something that was always done before. Is that something that we talked about being able to do that again?
Probably after the probationary period, but we couldn't do.
I wonder.
How long's the probationary period?
90 days.
How long?
So why wouldn't we bring them in when we hired them, so we can say hello and welcome them? Maybe they'd be more likely to stay.
Okay.
We don't say goodbye, we say hello.
I have one other thing. This may not particularly pertain to you, but indirectly it does. I think with Franklin County, Marion County, Grundy County, 911. So when people call 911 here, can you kind of explain again how that works?
Yes, ma'am.
Who gets the call? Who's coming if you call?
It's a very good question. So depending on where you live at, and depending on where you live at in the city, so we all know, well, we may not know, but on the other side of the road here, it's Marion County, right? So if you live there and you call 911, dispatch center, it's going to automatically dispatch you to 911 Marion County. They're gonna ask you your address, right? They're gonna say, what's the nature of your event? And then you're gonna say, dah 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 dah, and they're gonna say, hold on, I'm gonna transfer you to Mont Eagle 911. So there is a delay there, so. And depending on where you live at, now, if you live in Grundy County, it's gonna directly go to our 911 center here in town. But if you live in Franklin County, it's gonna go to the Franklin County 911 Center. Then it's gonna be red dispatched to us here in Mont Eagle. And there's, to my knowledge, no other way that that can be resolved because of the county, so unfortunately.
And the delay is just small?
It's not very long, but a lot of it's gonna be dependent on which call center, so some call centers are bigger than others, 911 dispatch centers, so if you've got, let's say, five people at Franklin County, dispatchers, and only two of them are currently on a call, then it's gonna be quicker, right? But let's say you have a dispatch center like ours, which is very small, but they're on two calls, they've got two calls waiting and another one coming in. So that's gonna vary, so that's gonna, and that's gonna be more of a logistical thing that each 911 center has to address.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, William.
Yes.
Fire Department?
Y'all don't wanna meet the firemen? You wanna meet the firemen, Doreen? Good evening.
I can.
The ISO, we've talked about for about a year, has finally came. So ISO was here on August 23rd. He spent the day going through all the department, the files, and the records, all of our inventory. There really wasn't any set-in-stone numbers that was released until he completes the entire schedule. He did feel good about it and said, we've drastically improved on all of our standards within the town. The department also began our NFPA and ISO required hose testing. There's like 4,800 feet of hose in the department. We've been working to test. We're about midway through. We should finish that up by the end of the month. With the fires and training, we've been kinda busy with, with actual working fires, so we've used about 55,000 in water for right now. That's the best that I can figure. The local bar and grill, several folks have asked me on the daily about the local. So first and foremost, we wanna thank Tracy, Swanee, Deckard, you know, that our partners have come in to help us with that fire. And for what it's worth, that was actually excellent work from the fire departments that was there. There were several areas of property that were saved and salvaged in the, in the lower floors, areas of the, of the building. Same been turned over to TBI, and it's all still under investigation. They've not released any kind of preliminary step yet on it. So hopefully, we'll have a report back from TBI within, you know, a week or so, is kinda the way the investigator was talking. That's about all I've got on the fireside.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
The ISO rating, where, where have we been? Where are we now?
So we've been around the six.
And what's the?
Been four. I mean, it just depends on where we're at, with, I mean, kinda the way the inspector was telling me, it depends on where we're at. Five, you know, any, any kind of number within the five areas, you know, a strong number. He said that he felt that we would improve, you know, more than what we were because we've added new trucks, we've added, you know, a ton more equipment, the factors of, you know, AJ being part-time, me being a full-time guy. And the ISO rule, he told me, for the volunteers, you get three, it's three for one, so for three volunteer firemen, that actually equals one fireman. So now we're getting credit in town for myself as one, and AJ gets 50% credit on that schedule. So that, believe it or not, helps the numbers for the truck going out, responding to the calls. There's 320 seconds on the guideline. Mont Eagle now meets that qualification because you've got, during the daytime, you've got two guys here to get the truck out anywhere within the town within 320 seconds. So that, that factor, we, we achieved that. We've never done that before. So hopefully, we'll notice some improvement.
How many volunteers do we have now?
There's 22. There's about 17 that's regular.
Out of those 22 volunteers, are any of them painting fire hydrants?
Yeah, painting fire hydrants, they're testing hoses, and they're also doing commercial pre-plans. Most, most of your hydrants are done. Through the middle of town, you're just lacking the, the backroads. So, you know, I mean, and then on top of the, the painting, there's still the hidden mess for the repairs that we've, we've been working on. We've gotta figure out that schedule now, so we're one man down on it.
Are you still looking at?
Yep.
So out of the 26 that were out of service, when we spoke about it two months ago, how many, where would you say we are now?
22? I think we're around 22, right? Yeah, we've got about six to eight that was significant, that we've actually torn apart and repaired and worked on.
Okay, so, but we still got roughly 20 that are out of service?
All, all the hydrants within the town flows, I mean, all these, it's been written up under the Rogers inspection. You guys jump in, but most of these may be a drain problem. It may be the hydrants turned and facing the wrong way. The, the steamer plug, they expect it to be facing the road for easy access. It may be turned 90 degrees. I mean, it's nothing that's affecting the dexterity of the hydrant. It's just, I call it cosmetics on the positioning of it. It's not affecting the truck hitting the hydrant or anything of that nature. Some of the hydrants, it's got seats, you know, maybe a rock or something under the seat where you gotta take the stem and everything apart, flush it out, work it out, and get the debris out from under it, put it all back together, grease it, and it works fine, so.
We, we talked about hiring a contractor for a while to do that, and now we're doing it all, are we doing it in-house?
Yes.
Okay. So we've gotten two in six months, so that means we're, we're probably another six months away from having everything
Depending. On top of the hydrants, we're also doing the hose, the pre-plans, all that stuff goes into this ISO school. So, yep.
Are all our engines up and running now?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so we got the ladder truck back?
The ladder trucks, you said engines, you didn't say ladder.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
So the ladder's still in, renting, being repaired. Haven't heard any report on it yet.
Any other questions for the fire department?
Yes, ma'am. I'll jump into building inspections, and I'll let AJ have codes. Six inspections has been done, that all includes all of it, the finals, refins, the slabs, all that stuff. So there's six inspections done over the month. There's four new building permits been filed and created. I'm still working to, to train on the online classes for the ICC and preparing for the November testing. I've still been trying to crunch all that in to, to get that done. Any other buildings, questions? For the month of August, we've had three violations served throughout the town. Towards the end of the month, I've been working about four more for this month. They're a little, a little more in-depth and stuff, so that should be coming up. Probably next week, I'll have everything finalized and served for them for this month. I've satisfied two codes that I've had served in previous, and then the vinyl yard signs, just kinda like yard signs for like just advertisement signs. Pulled probably 10 of them, made contact with, with the owners, with them, advised them of the ordinance, and that we can't have them in city limits. So, and that's pretty much all that's been going on there, and like I said, got a few, few working violations for this month already.
AJ Travis had talked to us about a couple that had to be turned over to city court. What is the status of those? I think it was two, didn't you say?
Yeah. They're ready, they're ready for the court date.
Okay, so they have not, they have not had to court yet?
Yeah, they're ready for it.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I should point out, and maybe you all know this, maybe you realize it, maybe you don't. I think we're more than blessed for a town this size to have the police and fire departments we have. It's not, the fire department is not just jumping on a truck and spraying some water. There's training, there's maintenance, there's inventory, constant requests and requirements by other departments and the state. Same thing goes for the Police Department. Posting reports, post TBI, FBI, whoever they work with. I think we're very fortunate in this size town to have the talent we have in those departments. And I just wanted that on the record. Doreen, you wanna talk about recreation and parks?
Jessica's gonna talk about recreation, Greg, that's okay. The Paul Parton.
Fine.
The Recreation Committee met last week, and the people that were there were Ty Burnett, who's our, our chairman of the committee. Doreen and I met, and we also had the representation of Craig Parton and Kyle Underhill. And we had, it was kind of a brainstorming meeting to try to find out what kids in the area might be, enjoy doing. Soccer, softball, and then to reach out to kids that might not wanna do those kind of sports. We talked about having a home run derby or archery, some frisbee golf, skating or skateboarding. We're not really sure at this point what kids wanna do, and we wanna make sure that whatever the kids wanna do, that we have their parental involvement from their families in some way. So we're to meet next week to hash out some more, some more discussion on this. And Ty, you may wanna jump in here and, and say a few things. It was really more of an exploratory meeting than, than anything else. We're trying to find ways to use the facilities that we already have to best advantage.
Well, I would admit that making soccer happen in Mont Eagle was more difficult than I thought it would be. There's partnerships aren't there that work easily for us. It's not that our, our potential partners aren't willing, but those, those partnerships don't work easily for a number of reasons, so we, we, making soccer happen in a formal fashion for this fall is probably not gonna happen, but we wanna, we wanna look at maybe a couple of soccer events, find out what type of people are interested in soccer, so we still have hopes for that this fall. So, and then hopefully have some, you know, make sure we have baseball next spring, and then try to find out what people are interested in and expand on that. So if anybody's interested in having soccer in Mont Eagle next fall, please give me a yell or one of our council people, and they'll be happy to give my number and email address to you. So we will need help with it. We won't be, I'm not gonna be coaching a soccer team. So I'm happy to help make that happen, but I'm not gonna be coaching your soccer team.
Anything else, Jessica?
Nope, I think that's it. The, the next meeting is next week on the 14th at, on the 15th of September at 4 o'clock. If anybody is interested in coming, will let me know, and we'll tell you where we're gonna meet. I'm not sure we know yet. Or do? At Tower?
I'm sorry, where are we meeting?
Tower Bank.
Tower Bank.
You mentioned archery. You probably, you may already be aware, Tennessee Wildlife Resources has a lot of funding for that, right? funding for that right now. We're standing up an archery program at the university right now for university students, and they've got money, yeah.
I'll give you a yell, we'll see how many. We were talking about that in there.
We got archery instructor training next Friday, and we have a couple of openings. So if you're interested, we're bringing in an instructor, high school level, for the BAI, the Basic Archery Instructor, I mean, next Friday.
That was one thing that we had talked about, was just trying to get kids out there like a soccer startup, just to see how many would be interested in playing. It's not a game, but just get kids out there, kick the ball, whatever, you know, and the same with archery. You know, it's got to be a beginner's class somewhere.
Yeah.
For all of us.
TWRA's providing equipment and everything. And so I know they've already got an equipment cache, I think with the Sportsman's Club in Tracy, where they've been using it for 4H, but, and they're going to bring us another one. So if that's something that there's interest from the students in, there's probably, there's a lot of resources to do that.
Well, it's more than kids, too. We're looking at adults want to form some sort of league or co-ed. Right. And there's a group that may want to play cricket, so we're waiting to hear from them, too. Pickleball. Pickleball. We don't have, we don't have a place to play pickleball.
Well, now that you bring it up, I've been approached to work with a group about pickleball. We have not yet met. When the time comes, I'll clue in everybody, and we'll see what we do. Anyway, let's move on. If there's nothing else for recreation?
That's it.
Well, thank you. Doreen?
Do you want me to do the calendar of events, or you want me to wait till the ultimate report?
Ultimate, but let's just do 9/11.
Okay. Well, we want to have a 9/11 ceremony. It will be at the flagpole between the 911 Center and the Fire Hall. And I do want everyone to know, we will be sounding sirens at 7:46 to mark the attack of the North Tower. We will have one at 8:03 to mark the attack on the South Tower. We will have another siren, 8:37 is the attack on the Pentagon, and at 9:03 is when the plane crashed in Pennsylvania. We will gather at the flagpole at 8:30. We'll have speakers, prayer, and it will last probably about 30 minutes, but we want to not forget 9/11. We're going to put it out there. It will be on Facebook, it will be on Montego Community News, Town of Montego, various Facebook webpages, it'll be on GCTV, I don't know how, Herald, Messenger. So if you don't get the advertisement, sorry, that's all I can do.
It would help if you knew other people in your neighborhood that may not have access to that sort of thing. You may want to just pass the word, for that and any other event that the town has. Communication is obviously key, and it would help if you told your friends and neighbors. Thank you, Doreen. Utility manager. Travis, you want to start?
Sure. To give an update, the Bowes Water Tank will be bidding out on the 19th of this So we would anticipate having a recommendation to award on the next board meeting, I guess the October, oh, could be the end of September board meeting. With bids coming in, so that'll be the 19th. Schedule that to be determined by the contractor, but based on whether it could be, you know, they could choose to get started immediately and go ahead and get started on the tank before winter time sets in. So we'll know more once it's awarded, and we have a pre-construction meeting with the contractor, and we'll be able to tell you more, which will be sometime in October. So by the October board meeting, we would know attentive schedule on start dates and finish dates and that sort of thing.
Okay.
It'll be similar as to the repairs, but probably not so intrusive as the ones on the city tank. So we'll have containment, it'll look very similar, and it'll hopefully be a good product like the city tank is when we're done.
Is it the same company?
We won't know until we did, but that would be a good thing. They did a very good job. They're semi-local, and so we're hoping they participate in the bidding process. My understanding is they're very interested, so. The water treatment plant basin, we, I think where we left that last board meeting, we received a report from the concrete testing, and that was, they determined that to be some air entrament issues of the concrete during installation, and the patchwork, which is good news. So in layman's terms, that means that it's not a significant or severe issues within the structure itself. So that means that it can be lined, more or less save the structure, the superficial patching that is peeling off, which is what precipitated the TDEC notice violation, that that will have to be stripped out. We spoke with TDEC, and they know that we can't have the basin down at the same time that we're having a tank down. And so we're going to schedule that and move forward with that once the DeBow's tank is completed. So that gives the town some time budget-wise, time-wise. We don't want to do that in winter time. And so we'll have some discussions with TDEC to see if we can do that, maybe sometime next summer after both tanks are completed. That puts it in a new budget year, and so it gives us some time to look into some repair types and get some estimates in. And so that's good news, in that it would be a much cheaper repair had it gone the other way. So more to come, probably next dry weather season, unless TDEC says otherwise, but that's what we're going to advocate for. And I think they will oblige for that timeframe, so. We're currently working on the design of the rehabilitation for the sewer, and that's for the ARP funds and ARC grant funding that will go to replacing and repairing the defects that were located during the CCTV portion of the study. And so we have submitted things to Southeastern Development District to facilitate the environmental part for the ARC grant, because they have a little bit different requirements, which is similar to like a CDBG or a SRF-type grant structure. And so that ball is rolling, and so as soon as we receive approval back, we would be cleared to bid on that project. And I would like to sit down as part of a workshop and maybe discuss or show the board some things that we're going to be able to repair, some things that we're not going to be able to repair due to budget limitations. So with the grant, we have about $1 million of construction funding. We've identified probably twice that amount in priority or significant findings. And so I want you to understand what we're leaving on the table and what's left, and so that, we're getting a lot done for the money, and it's free money. And so that's a good thing, but also just realization that there's still a lot of things out there that are issues that need to be repaired, that can be scheduled out in the future after this project is completed and down the road. And so you have some time to plan in several budget years, but just want everyone to know, you know, what we're going to repair, what we're not going to be able to repair. And I've already met with the utility staff, and we've discussed some of those items that are most significant, that's on their list. And so they've currently been addressing some of the issues, the grease issues in the town. I think they've already started going around and trying to facilitate some of that, which there's a lot of sags and pipes all over town, which relates back to installation issues. And so basically, it's like a roller coaster, and so the grease makes that worse, where solids settle and deposits settle in the sags of the pipes. Only way to repair those are to dig those out. And unfortunately, those are really not high priority, because we're trying to remove INI and address severe structural issues with this money. And so there's a lot of other issues that are going to be left on the back burner that would adversely affect operation and maintenance on a day-to-day basis. And so there's some improvements that the community can do from a standpoint of grease and not pouring grease down the sinks, because we sit all over town, and a lot of people may not know that that's a problem, or that there's anything wrong with that, but it does stop up and harden and cause backups in sewer pipes. And so that's something that needs to be addressed as a community that can alleviate or lessen the operation and maintenance cost for the utility in the future by not pouring grease down the sinks. As homeowners and as commercial establishments, having proper grease traps and that sort of thing. So that's, there's a lot of things like that that need to, I'd like to share the findings, and that way everyone's in the know of where we're going and what we're trying to accomplish. But I think it's a good thing we have some grant dollars to make some repairs, and so that'll be up and coming as soon as we get approvals from the environmental.
Any questions, Mr. Wilson?
Adam.
I'm sorry?
Adam.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
John, Nate, if you want to, is there anything for the utility manager? John, do you have anything?
No, no questions. Go ahead.
Yes, so I did want to show this to the rest of the board. Several of us have been working, mostly John and Debbie and the mayor and I, on trying to figure out how we can do some more regular reporting to the rest of the board and to the community about the water and sewer. I know during my first time up here, my first term, you hardly really knew that we were also a water and sewer board, because we didn't talk about water and sewer a lot. So I worked with John to get this report put together to kind of help us understand on a monthly basis sort of what's happening and what's going on. So going forward, and we're just starting, and so John and I are working on getting this thing filled in. Month to month, we're going to, he's going to be reporting on what Laurel Lake looks like, how many taps we have going in, and as we populate this, then also there'll be year-to-date totals, so that we can understand, okay, well, we feel like we have a real development crutch going on. Well, you know, this year we really only had one commercial tap go in, so that we can start to get a better sense of that. And so this is the first time John's put those numbers together, and I appreciate it. I did have a question, John. It looks like we purchased more water. Well, let me just explain to everybody. What I've learned in going through this is that I think everybody knew we buy water from Tracy City every month. Some of that water, I've learned, thanks to John, is to give pressure to the people on that side of town that wouldn't otherwise have good pressure, because they're so far away from the tank. And then there are other meters that we don't even, they're not even connected to our system, but there are people within our water district, and we have other meters. I think we decided we had seven meters? We have seven meters with Tracy City. So one of them is going into our system, and that's the one we all think about, and the other six we never see. So when you see the water purchase from Tracy City on the system, that's just a number that went into our water lines, and then the pass-through is water that we never see. We have no way of servicing those customers. So it's really that first number that we've always thought about. And I guess my question, though, John, is that number is larger than all the water we sold.
Okay, that, where that says, the water purchase from Tracy?
Yep.
I think those three last zeros come dog.
All right, that would make sense. Okay, yeah, that would be about right. That's what I was wondering. And then you got a dot there, I just didn't see it. All right, so that makes sense. And then line flushing, Travis has reported. So unaccounted water is the difference between the water that we produced, which in this case was 10,000, or 10,900 gallons, and the water sold, which in this case is 4.5 million. So that would make it look like we lost more than half of the water we produced? Or could there be something wrong with that number as well?
No, no.
So we might need to look at that going forward, because the water we sold includes the water we purchased for Tracy City. So surely not, surely the majority of the water we produced wasn't lost. So we may, we'll try to drill into that next year. But it's normal that we have unaccounted water loss. Every system deals with that, they have leaks. But if we know on a month-to-month basis how much that is, that can help us understand how many leaks do we have in the system? Where do we need to be prioritizing our repairs? And then we kind of did the same thing on the sewer side. We didn't get the INI in this month, but INI is simply the difference between the how many gallons of wastewater we sold, which in this case was, looks like 8,500, and how much we treated, which is 9,500. So we treated about a million gallons of INI last month. And so we want to start just sort of reporting that every month, and as we work with Travis and others, this should improve over time. So thank you, John, for starting. We're going to work on this, but hopefully we'll be seeing this every month as a way to just sort of get a better handle on how our water and sewer is operating.
Quick question.
I think it's great that you guys are doing this on a monthly basis, but really do, that's good. Can you scroll down just a second? John, on the, we'll scroll up a little bit, I'm sorry. On the 10 million gallons produced, is that, we say produced, is that distributed? Is that 10 million gallons that went out of your system, or?
That's what the water plant produced.
That's a meter at the water plant.
Meter at the water, so it's distributed water?
Yeah. So it's water that we pulled out of Laurel Lake and turned into drinking water, and it left the water plant. It didn't necessarily make it to the tap. That's the unaccounted water loss.
And then with, is there, with something, with water sold, sorry, water sold, this from Tracy, that's 4.5 million. I mean, that's obviously a significant, we left some number in the old produce, we got, we need to find out where that other, that almost 6 million went. Is that, does that take into account what's sitting actually in the water tanks?
No. But I bet what happened, John, do you remember water sold? I bet if you didn't add Tracy City's water to that.
Well, if we could.
Yeah, if you had Tracy City's water to that, that's probably reasonable. We probably had unaccounted water loss in the 20% range, and that would put it right there. So I bet it was just a map there. So we'll get it, we're just working on it.
Further, but thank you. Okay, let's, what, oh, Mr. Lay, I'm sorry, I didn't.
That's okay.
Yes?
The wastewater created for Tracy City, were we paid for all of those 546,341 gallons? Was that what we paid for, or is that what we metered?
That's what we bill them.
Okay, what about our meters that we're metering? Is that an accurate number that we've been paid for what we create?
Yes, that's what I got from them. Not what they, they bill us.
So it's their meter. It includes their INI. We get paid for treating their INI, not our own.
That's what I wanted, that is to say. Not reading off the meters of the water customers that are on sewer, because it would not reflect any INI.
Correct, yeah. Tracy's paying us for all their INI, but it's still affecting our capacity, so we still want them to deal with it.
And we have, one of these, like, Assembly Ground has master metered, correct, for water? You've got two, they got just one now?
They did, we got.
Just one now, yeah. So is there a report on that, on its metered? The sewer is metered? Was there some discussion of that on INI or something? How do we know, I mean, Assembly Ground's just like Tracy City, they have their own distribution system. Should we not be looking at the water for that system, just like we do at Tracy City?
So we did that in a, on a short-term basis, so that we could establish what percentage of the INI was coming out of the Assembly. And so we don't, but we do not have a meter to capture that and bill them on a monthly basis. However, what we have talked about is that that is, if the Assembly cannot get their INI under control, that is the next step to take.
And what percentage is that, Travis? Is that?
I don't know right offhand, but I do know that during that, the pump station metering project that we did back in the spring, that we verified that Tracy City's meter was worth. working properly and verified that we are getting reimbursed for every gallon per their meter. And then the initial flow monitoring that we, that we did back a couple of years ago, we had a meter at the old treatment plant that would include the net from the assembly plus everything north of East Main. And we did some flow isolation to establish that there is significant INI from the assembly, but because their lines come in in multiple locations and the flows are low typically all the time while no one's there at a season during the winter time, that it's too low for area velocity meter to stick in the ground and meter those areas. So it's not really conducive to having a metering site such as Tracy City, which is on a pump station. Just because when the INI is there, they don't really have any typical flow rate because they don't have any sewer users there during the winter time.
And everything basically be INI that's flowing through there?
That's correct. And so basically you have dry pipes all the time until it rains and then it would have some, some value, but you would have to meter at multiple locations all the time and that would be a metering cost that someone would have to have meters in there and.
The customer not have to pay for whatever. Tracy City's have to pay for their.
Yeah, that's typically up to the utility on how they want to handle that, but that's certainly an option.
At one time, we put in a temporary flow meter at North Central there where the creek is. That was the end of our inflow going point one, right? And we, it was a temporary thing for a report that we did 10 or 12 years ago.
See, really monitor that. We'd have to put that one back, have to put one on First Street, was on Carroll, Washington.
But what is the volume of, like during the season of, per day on usage? I mean, we used to jump up like 100,000 a day?
Well, I don't know now.
But at one time, it was estimated during the season, well, you look at your flow today, if it's 300,000 today, it's 600,000 in July. Not all of that's assembly, some of that's restaurants and uptake. But it appears to me that everybody needs to pay their fair share, whether it's the wastewater treatment plant or the water plant. And then on the water, unaccounted for, I think the previous engineers told us one time that you want to keep that around 10% or something. They have guidelines on that, don't they, Travis?
For which, the INI?
Well, on unaccounted for water.
Yeah, TDEC, TDEC is anything less than 15 to 18% is acceptable, but certainly the closer to zero, the better, but.
I think one time we got down to 12 or something.
Yeah, that's, that's really good. I mean, if you're, if you're near 12.
Thank you. If we could continue this after the meeting? Thank you. Okay, street department, anything?
Just that tree was the main thing.
It was a major issue? Okay, thank you.
Michael actually brought up yesterday a couple of trees that are right out here in front of the Bows that eventually are probably gonna need to, they're gonna drop onto city property and onto the trail. They need to be at some spare time. They're two right out front.
Planning Commission, just a brief recap. There's consideration or requests that certain roads be closed. We're studying that, getting additional information as to utility location. And that was basically it as far as that. We have not heard from, people ask, we have not heard from Hampton Inn. Marriott is still working diligently. DeBose is scheduled to close within the month, from what I understand. And that's basically it. We reviewed some procedures, but the assembly has approached us for zoning changes depending on utility location and emergency access, so we'll look at those at an appropriate time. And other than that, I don't have any other recollection of the planning commission. Dan, do you have anything I left out?
No, we're gonna stay with the, with the plan that's coming, forthcoming with the group coming in to help us with a master plan before we approve any other different ordinances and change anything for anybody. It seems that that was the mind of the commission last night.
When the time comes. Okay, Alderman report, Nate, Doreen?
Okay, Saturday night, this past Saturday night, we had a street dance in town thanks to Shane Worley and Wild Ride. It was, it was very nice. We used to have street dances quite often and have gotten out the habit and hopefully we can get back and land it. As far as calendar of events, we have Feast on the Street tomorrow night from four to eight, that'd be the food trucks. Our Fresh Mess will be back on Monday night from four to six or however long somebody stays. I mentioned the 911 ceremony Monday morning is when this is gonna happen, the 11. As far as the community center goes, on the 19th of this month, they will have an estate planning. Ruskin Leonard has volunteered to come up and talk about wills and trust, give some advice. So need to do that for sure. That would be from four to six. They have Bingo on the 21st. It's always the third Thursday of the month. They are also selling commemorative bricks and they're gonna take this money and do the landscape around the community center. And there's someone there usually every Friday from three to five. Am I right, Martha? Am I right?
Jackie.
From three to five, if you have any questions about it. And it's also, they have a website now, the Montegoal Community Center website. It will be also on Montegoal Community News, Town Montegoal. And I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. Just let me mention that this is completely volunteer-driven and is no expense or challenge to the town. So for all those volunteers and Jackie Ruggles is here, Noda Marcy, Doreen, all those that have participated and a lot of others that I just failed to mention, thank you for that because volunteers help any organization or community. So thank you for that. Next, Jessica, you have anything?
I don't have anything, but I wanted, if I could, ask Jackie a question.
Sure.
I know that you were talking to someone about donations to the community center versus going through this group that has the bricks and it's, it is okay for us to donate directly to the town and signify for the community center. It doesn't have to go through the people that sell the bricks. Thanks.
Where are the bricks going?
They'll be put around the front of the community center and there's a paper and they'll say you can have anything, put on it, any of your name, anything like that. And I think they're a hundred bucks. But they're wanting to put a bench and some landscaping around the community center, clean it up.
And the library too.
And the library in town. But there'll be somebody there from three to five on Fridays?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'm not sure, but I know that there is going to be one in the morning on Saturday at nine to 11.
Okay.
Nine to 11 on Saturday. Are any questions about the brick purchase? Okay, Dan, anything?
I don't have anything.
Nate, would you review the general plan to date with the Architect Foundation?
Sure. So as I think probably many of you know, we have applied for and received a grant from the Architects Foundation to do a town plan. It's a group called Community by Design. And so what is gonna happen is there'll be two different trips with professionals. So our team lead has been identified. He's an architect out of Virginia and I'm happy if anybody wants to email to share some of the work he's done. He's our project leader. And then right on October 25th through 27th, he is gonna be here along with two professionals from Communities by Design to do an initial scoping visit of the town. So we'll be doing tours, we'll be looking at different assets and different challenges. We'll be meeting probably with the planning commission and hopefully the mayor and council to get a preliminary sense of what are the needs of the town. And from that group, from that initial meeting, then they're gonna put together a larger group of professionals and they'll be between, somewhere between probably eight and 12 professionals that'll then come back in probably late winter or early spring and they'll be here at least a week. And we'll be planning, we'll be working with them, we being the steering committee, and I wanted to bring up who that is. The steering committee of the Communities by Design team, I'll scroll through when you get a chance to look at those names. But we're gonna be getting together in the coming weeks to plan their first visit, which will be sort of their initial introduction to the town. And then from then, between then and the spring, then we'll be working to plan this week so that we can get maximum community participation. So we've, you know, looked for hopefully more than one event that the entire community is invited to, because we want to have as many opportunities as we can to get as many voices and perspectives on the town as we can. So this is the committee and just a little bit about how we came up with them. If you've been coming to the meetings, you remember that several months ago I put out a request for letters of support and that also went out on our Facebook page and it also went out on the town's website. And so I was fortunate enough, I think the town received something like 25 letters of support from different community members and different community organizations. And from that group, then we went back and either asked a subset of those members to be a part of the group or we ask in some instances for the group to nominate a person. So for instance, Iva is representing the South Cumberland Tourism Partnership. Scott Parrish is representing the assembly. Martha Ann Pilcher was, was the designated person of the Morton Memorial Methodist Church. And then I think the latest member who just joined is Jim Harmon and he was given to us as the name to represent the South Cumberland Chamber of Commerce. So the goal was to get a mix of newcomers and oldcomers and people who've been here for a long time and to get a mix of both business owners and civic organizations so that we can, we can help these folks better understand who Montegoal is as a town. So this process will be ongoing, as I said. There won't be as much opportunity for public interaction during this first visit because like I said, it's just a scoping visit. But in late winter, early spring, look for them to try to engage with as many people as they can. So we're talking, if you want to be involved, particularly we are looking for churches and civic groups that would be willing to host them. So we're talking to Morton Memorial about maybe having a covered dish supper and inviting the planners so that people from the church can come. We'd love to get some other churches involved in that. The way this program works is they're not charging us anything. We're just paying for their expenses. So any meal that we sponsor for them is less money that the town ends up paying. And we were fortunate enough to get a grant. We've also funded some money through the general budget to cover this and we've also had some direct cash donations from residents of Montegoal. But any, any business donations or churches that want to host us for a meal, that's all great and that helps, that helps more people interact with these planners.
Okay. Barry, council, any questions on that? All right, the one comment I have is to remind you that the next city meeting will be September 25th, September 25th, the last Monday in September, which is this month. Old Business, you've reviewed the contract from Southeast Tennessee Development. I think it's been discussed. I'll accept a motion to accept the contract, to submit it.
I'll make such a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that contract? Hold up.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, that's all I have under old business on the agenda. New business, we have business permits. Is Ethan Griffin here? Could you step up and tell us what you're doing?
Hi, so I am the newest owner of Montegoal Nutrition and Country Mart. I pretty much, I always see my business as a beacon of light in the community. I pretty much serve healthy energy beverages as well as replacement shakes that help people lose weight or gain healthy muscle. I also do wellness profiles, whether it be weight loss or muscle gain. I do skincare profiles. I also do fundraisers for the community. I'm just, I love everything that I do. I've been in the business about a year. I'm only 20 years old. I'm in the top 10 percentage of my company, so it's pretty cool. So.
Counsel, any questions? And your location is where?
I'm in the Country Mart Plaza going towards Swanee, Montegoal Nutrition, Suite D.
Thank you. I'll accept it. I'll accept a motion to approve the business permit?
I'm going to make a motion to approve Montegoal Nutrition business permit.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Next business license is for Mr. Lay.
Yes.
I understand you've applied for a business permit. Would you care to embellish on your application?
Yes, after about a year and a half, five with you guys.
Period of time here.
Good things come to those who wait.
And what business is this for?
It's for 24 stores, but 800 Dixie Lane Avenue.
Okay. Counsel, any questions?
Are you gonna sell those air-conditioned ones like you had out front?
Climate control.
Climate control was crazy. They seem to have a lack of climate control.
Any other questions of Mr. Lay?
Where's 800 Dixie Lane? Where is that?
Across the bridge, down on the left.
Here.
Dixie Lane Avenue originally was the main thoroughfare, Chicago, Miami and used to be a booming place out there. You know, be a part of the history. Yes, yes.
So it doesn't look like you were willing to strictly comply with the laws. Do you have some concerns about your ability?
Well, I thought in the past you guys did. It wasn't me. I thought it was you folks, ladies and gentlemen.
That had questions about your ability to comply with the law? Gotcha, okay.
I had no question of that. Thank you, Mr. Lay.
I marked you off the list.
Thank you very much. And now it's time to get serious again. Any other questions for Mr. Lay?
No.
All those in favor, oh, I'm sorry. I'll accept a motion to accept the business permit application from Dean Lay.
I'll make such a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions of Mr. Lay? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
After a year.
The next one, Shell Chiropractic Clinic, please.
I'm Dr. Eric Scholl. With Eric, we have another clinic in Winchester. My dad is the primary chiropractor there. But we're opening up in, also in the Country Mart, Suite D3. In about a month, it's still, it's the last space that is yet to be occupied in that building. Obviously, we'll be doing chiropractic adjustments, some physical therapy, some acupuncture type things, and also selling nutritional supplements, back braces, blood orthotics, that kind of, that kind of thing.
Okay. Hours of operation, you gonna be open every Monday or Friday?
Most likely Monday all day, Tuesday could be a half day, Wednesday, Thursday full days, Friday a half day. That's, that's the hours in Winchester, so it'll probably be very, very similar.
Great, okay. Any questions? All right, I'll accept a motion to approve the business application for Shell Chiropractic.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the business permit of Skol Chiropractic.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations. All right, I'll accept a motion to approve the business application for Shell Chiropractic.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the business permit of Skol Chiropractic.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have the first reading of Ordinance 17-23, which you have in your packet. The title is "An Ordinance to Amend Section 501 of the Zoning Ordinance to Move Truck Stops, Fueling Stations, Parking Areas and Truck Service Facilities to Be Used on Review with a Special Exception Approval Required by the Board of Zoning Appeals in the Town of Mont Eagle." I'll accept a motion on the first reading to accept, on the first reading, Ordinance Number 17-23.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion, first reading of this ordinance? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Did I get enough ayes?
Aye.
Sorry.
Greg.
You jumped to it, it was a little quick.
The fact that I've got the ordinance is 17-23 is different. It's the budget amendment.
I missed number.
Okay.
That was like, it's not.
17 is the one where I read the caption. Is there any discussion or questions on that one?
No.
Okay, so let's do a revote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Thank you. That's on the first reading of that. Beautification is next on the agenda. Virginia Curry, if you would give the report.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Virginia Curry and I live at 102 Walnut Avenue and I am representing Martha Ann Pilcher and the Mont Eagle Beautification Committee. Our committee members are Martha Ann Pilcher, Jessica Favolaro, Katie Trahan, Sherry Huddleston, Ron Spencer, and Carol and Bill Bennett. The Mont Eagle Beautification Committee is brand new and we're beginning to help the mayor with landscaping and an overall beautification of our community. The committee will present two annual awards. In early December, an award for the best holiday decorations on Main slash College Street, and in June, an award for the best beautification of the property of a business on Main and College Street. The committee hopes to have the Mont Eagle Business Committee become involved in creating a more attractive town. The committee will be asking the council for permission needed to apply for grants. The grants that we are looking into are through Blue Cross and Blue Shield Healthy Places and AARP Challenge Grant.
Okay. And when you're ready for that grant approval to come back to the.
Yes.
Old Man Meeting.
Yes.
We can move forward.
Yes.
Any questions, Mrs. Curry, on that report?
The Department of Community and Economic Development also has some city beautification grants you might look into. I can help you.
One more time.
Department of Economic and Community Development.
Thank you. And is that in Tennessee?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. In Tennessee.
They have a Streetscapes program you might look at.
Streetscapes.
I'm confident that the name is Streetscapes. I'm pretty sure it's with ECD, but I can, I can look that up for you.
That would be wonderful and probably if you'll communicate to Martha Ann.
Okay.
I'm just the messenger. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, you have in your packet approval to repair the bucket truck at a cost of $14,900. It's done by Altech, the manufacturer of the bucket truck, the bucket itself, not the truck. The truck is in good working order, but we need approval to spend $14,900 to repair that bucket. That includes, of course, the cables, the hydraulics, and all the mechanisms of the bucket operation. So you've had this in your packet. Oh, I'm sorry. On the same ordinance, which was an emergency purchase of a trailer. Our trailer was stolen. We needed a trailer to transport machinery around to do water meter digs, et cetera. And that's the $9,000 on the same ordinance, so it's Ordinance Number 18-23, which is a budget ordinance amendment for the budget year 2023, 2024. So adopted on the first reading, I'll accept a motion to do so.
I'll make a motion to accept the Ordinance 18-23 to repair the bucket truck and also replace the stolen trailer.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll say.
Thank you. Is there discussion?
So it looks like both of these are coming out of water and sewer rather than the general fund. I just see that.
Yes.
See that on section two.
Well, one is capital replacement, one is water and sewer. You see the note above each one? Section one and then section two?
Is it the capital replacement of the general fund or, okay.
Yes.
Okay, that's, that was my question.
Any other discussion on the motion? I'll entertain a motion to accept on the first reading, Ordinance Number 18-23.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'm just confused about the numbering. The, the truck stop.
The truck stop was 17, this one's 18.
All right.
The next one will be 12.
So Debbie had made a mistake with the packet and so I took her packet just before the meeting and scanned it, so that's why it's right up here.
Okay.
Because I just at the last minute did that to make sure we had something right to work on it. She just made a mistake and that was the quickest fix we could come up with.
All those in favor of the motion, well, I'm sorry, roll call.
Yes.
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 Next item on the agenda is the interlocal agreement which you have, which deals with the police department and its coverage. I'll accept a motion to accept the interlocal agreement to submit it.
I'll make a motion to accept the interlocal agreement that we have and we've read over.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion?
Do we have a similar conversation happening with Grundy County or is this?
Well, my understanding is it has to be approved here and then I go to the counties for their approval, but no matter what, we still have our agreement for what we're doing in our town.
Well, this is just for Marion County.
No, there's another one for Franklin and another one for Grundy.
Okay, so you got three copies.
There are three. Identical but the same. Ty?
Quick question. Essentially, what is this agreement?
It's an agreement of what the police department, how far they can go outside city limits and what they do if they're called and what they do if there are terrorism attack or active shooter versus the traffic stop.
Just curious.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think that the important ones, they're all important, but basically we're going to help each other out. We're not going to ask each other for money after the fact and we're going to take care of our own batteries first. How's that? But this is only Marion County. There's nothing else here. We don't have any other ones.
Well, they sent the three, the others are identical. It's just a different county. Yet to be signed. I'm sorry?
It's yet to be signed.
Yes, we have to. Yes, but this is approved and all signed and then move it forward as our attorney is instructed.
Okay, you got a motion and a second on it.
Well.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
We're, we're going to need to amend that motion because all we're, all we're voting on is, is one. So if we're going to approve all three, we're going to need to amend that motion just to make it clear.
All right. Who made the motion?
I, I didn't realize we were doing all three. I thought this was Marion County.
No, we're doing Grundy and Franklin as well. That was forwarded, I believe, but we're doing, to cover the entire town, we should do the entire counties, or the three counties.
So I would make a.
The wording is the same.
I would make a motion to approve the, an interlocal agreement with Marion County Sheriff's Department, Grundy County Sheriff's Department, and Franklin County Sheriff's Department, all mirroring the interlocal agreement we have before us for, between Town of Mont Eagle and Marion County Sheriff's Department.
Fine, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now Debbie is our city recorder, has something to talk about UPM, which she's reviewed previously.
This is the utility programs that we use in the office and we have to update it. If we do not go to a G5, we will not have any support. So we have, we basically make the difference. There is a charge of $19,795 for the mission startup and then there will be a monthly charge of $3,450.50. I think we talked about it at workshop.
Yeah, so they're going to start sending out all our bills remotely now?
Yes. So is there a motion to accept that contract for you, from UPM?
I'll make that motion that we accept the United Systems contract that they have laid out for us.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Is there discussion on the motion?
Do we know the cost of what our monthly charges are to do it ourselves and what it's going to be compared to the $30,000?
Basically, it doesn't apply to one of the differences because if we don't do this, we're going to have any support.
I recognize that, but I was just curious what the charge. We're doing our own billing versus having them do it.
It's probably going to cost us more.
So one of the things we used to do was be able to put our own information within the water bills. We're still going to be able to do that? So we just have to send it to them? Okay.
Basically, it's just an upgraded computer system.
Right.
Any further discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Lauren? Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, it's.
Sorry, I shouldn't make this comment after we pass you, but why are we paying $300 a month for property tax management system?
We added that to it just in case we need it.
Was part of the.
Well, that leave for the city property tax?
If as and when, if ever, but there was the option to add it, so we added it.
We must be planning on having one then.
Yeah, what?
I don't think we're going to recast this contract every year, so.
Well, this is a $300 monthly charge. And, and I'm sorry I didn't pick it up before we voted on it. I was reading as we were talking it through, but why would we pay $300 a month for property tax management system when we don't have a property tax?
What if we do one day?
Well, we would then charge, we would then ask to pick up that service at $300 a month, but we shouldn't.
I think you can add it, we have to do a math. Like we added direct causes, we've added that to it. Because if you do the contract, it's not a new.
But, but we're not going to have a property tax in the coming year that I'm aware of unless there's something else going on that I don't know about. So why would we put, if we're going to redo the contract annually, why are we paying $300 a month for a property tax management system?
We need to look into it.
Can, can we, can?
We have to accept the computer update. We'll look into the property tax part of the contract.
I don't have a copy of that.
Can we, can we look and see if we can take it out? Because that seems like throwing good money after bad.
And I'll report to you on that. Okay, next ordinance, Number 19-23. You have that in your packet. This is, well, self-explanatory. It's increasing the bonus amount to try to get towards being competitive with salaries in our neighboring communities. So reading it, budget amendment for the fiscal year 2023, 2024. You have it in your packet. I'll accept a motion to accept Ordinance Number 19-23.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Is there discussion on the motion?
Can you explain to us what this is all about? So. Can you explain to us how, how, what, what this is going to do? So I understand this is a one-time bonus. How is it divvied out and how is it determined what this would happen because we just?
It's a, it's listed on the ordinance, but it is an equal amount to each employee that is full-time in the town. And this is something that is given in lieu of wage increases at this time, but we wanted to do as much as we could as wages seem to be substantially less than our neighboring
So this is meant to aid in retention?
Fine, yes. It's meant to aid in retention.
But it, which we've been discussing. It's not a raise, it's just a one-time to one-time.
It's a one-time bonus. Which will be given at Christmas.
When will it be given?
This is the first, probably in November. This is the first reading. We'll need a second reading.
And, and everybody gets it regardless of their current wage? The same amount?
Yes.
Yes. Because nobody got a raise.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just, I'd just like to say that if we could take this same money and give people a raise going forward, that in my mind seems to aid retention more than a one-time bonus. Why wouldn't somebody just take their one-time bonus and then go take the job that makes more per hour?
To tie that to a salary for the balance of the fiscal year would not be a substantial amount.
You're right. You're right. It would, it would be something though permanent going forward. So the idea is that we're going to make this budget amendment and then not give it to them until several months from now to act as a carrot to get people to stay?
Well, so they know that we're working on it.
Okay. No, no, the Christmas bonus is separate. We've already, we put the Christmas bonus in the budget already. Okay. This is, this is what they wanted?
Yes.
Okay.
We reviewed it with the department heads and they are satisfied, thankful. They understand the situation, but they also know what people in the surrounding area is getting as well. So I think this will be a good first step in retention.
Well, I wanted to give raises this budget year and we didn't get to do that, so I'm okay with it.
Me too.
Yeah, I think we need to be giving raises.
Yes, me too.
Lauren? Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
That's it. All right, any citizen comments before we adjourn? Mr. Lay?
Anybody else want to go hard? No, nobody else.
I didn't see anyone raise their hand. Did I miss someone before Mr. Lay starts?
Are you going to be here a while?
Oh, I've just got 12 things on my hands. A couple of months ago, I was here and asked the council directly if any of you had done any work or consideration or anything towards implementing a city property tax on the Town of Mont Eagle property owners. And I was told no, I think. Is that correct?
That is correct from this.
Okay. And then tonight, we see that there's a property tax program being purchased and that just doesn't, that makes me wonder.
That was just part of the package, Dean, that was in there.
Is there anything else in there that?
No, not that I know of, not that was pointed out.
Okay. So, so I would hope as a citizen that you guys would not do that contract and waste $3,600 of the, of the Town of Mont Eagle's money. That could go lots of places and see direct results. It's obvious according to you guys that you're not going to implement a city property tax, so that, that component of that software program is not needed. And I can't imagine them knowing that we're not going to have it, that they want you to pay for it. If that's the kind of company you're doing business with, you need to do business with another company.
Well, as I say, I'll look into it.
Okay. And I apologize, I did not read it fast enough. And I apologize, I did not read it fast enough, that was, that's my, I would've asked the question earlier if I'd seen it.
Okay.
Uh, the next thing is, is earlier you, you guys were talking about, uh, the police officers, uh, seven of them, and you didn't know them, and, and, and that's, I think, pretty common in all communities now, that, that, but, but what, as a citizen, I would like for you guys to consider and, and vote on it next month, or discuss it and not vote on it, is perhaps taking, uh, on, on the Mont Eagle website, is have, uh, an introduction and a photograph and a little bio of, of the police officers, uh, not any information of their phone numbers or anything like that, but, but just a, a picture, so, uh, for, for the good things, if, if the people want to look, they can tell that it's, it's one of our police officers. Uh, sometimes you go through the school zone, and you see, I see two or three different ones, and, and sometimes they're in uniform, and sometimes they're not, and, and that's, I'm not, I don't care, uh, but used to, everybody dressed in blue, and, and one time the other they had black shirts, and after Labor Day they didn't, or something.
Right, I remember those days.
Yeah, and, and you knew who the police officers were.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, and times are different now, but, but lots of, of businesses, uh, have their staff on their website. Uh, and, and it's, to me, that, I would assume that would be a simple thing to do, and, and then, uh, this would not be an issue, and, and I don't think that would cost anything.
No, it's, it's, it's a great idea, and it's one that we've talked about, and, and part of the reason to get them here, to introduce them, is not just to introduce them to us, it's to introduce them to all of you, and, and the people that are watching, so that everybody
If you do it on the website, anybody is probably gonna reach a whole lot more citizens than it's gonna be our regular attendees here.
Yeah, that is a shame to even say that, but really, I do not know.
Well, I, I think you ought to have the util, all, all city employees you should have on the website, and if, if people want to compliment one, uh, or, by the same token, if, if somebody has a problem that one's sleeping under the tree every day at, at noon or something, uh, you, you know who it is. Uh, now, you drive through town, and, and if, if you don't know Budner, and he's sleeping under the tree, uh, you know, you don't know if he's a homeless person, or does he work for the city, or, you know, what's the deal?
I understand, that's not a great example, but I get the gist of your comment.
And, and I would like for y'all to consider that, and, and either vote it up or down, or take no action on it, whatever you wanna do. Uh, and, and, uh, next question, who, Mont Eagle Community News, who controls that? Is that, you mentioned that, I think, Doreen, or somebody did.
Is that yours, Michelle?
That is mine.
Okay, so that has, technically, that has nothing to do with the city?
Nothing to do with the city.
Okay, okay. And, uh, the next thing, on the planning commission, uh, it was reported about the meeting last night, one of the things that was left off that, that I think is of critical importance was the square footage of, of homes, of, of, I think that, I think they made a recommendation to come to the city council to change, uh, the square footage, minimum square footage on, uh...
They don't have to come to us, they made that change?
Oh, that's right, because it's in subdivision, yeah, there was discussion on that.
Yeah.
Uh, but the city can override that if they so desire, and I'm not opposed to increasing the 600 to 800. Uh, I, well, I cited an example of, Ms. Margie Guess was a little lady here in Mont Eagle all my life. Uh, she, she worked at the city cafe, uh, for years and years. Uh, she lived down by the, by the shop, in, in a small house, I think the city got the property now from, uh, from her niece. But, but that was a, a truly a tiny home, uh, before there were tiny homes, and, and she was never married, just, just her, and, and it suited her needs fine. And now, the planning commission, which, well, let me rephrase that, now the town of, the city is, is saying she couldn't live, or she couldn't have that in today's time. And, and I think, uh, the city is, is going overboard in telling people, uh, what size house they need, on minimum. Uh, it, it's like, uh, oh, we don't want something like that in the community, why not? If it serves a person's needs, uh, what's wrong with that? Well, why don't you regulate a maximum size and just make sure all of, you know, we all live in a 1,200 square foot home? How, how well you think that'll go over with people?
I, I agree with you, and I spoke against the, raising the square foot minimum, and I did not realize that the city had, had some recourse, but I'll ask some questions, because I think it was a, a bad move. I think it, it's gonna take the local people and make it harder for them to build houses, and it's just gonna encourage
And if you have a small lot, if you have a 25,000 square foot lot, uh, you know, you could, later on, you're gonna say we need 1,000 square feet, it makes the town look better, make us look like we're more important.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and that's not right. And, 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 you know, in, in the opening, uh, uh, the minister, you know, prayed to God for wisdom and, and charity, and, and, uh, and where's the charity in that?
We will not have affordable housing by increasing the required square footage for individual structures.
And, and why, why do you want to increase that? What's the justification of that?
I think it was, um, runabout and concern for developers that just tried to cram in a lot of houses on a smaller piece of property.
So everybody that's not a developer has to pay, pay, be penalized because there may be a developer.
I'm sure that there would be a variance if that was the issue, but how many cases are there that you're referring to? I mean, I don't understand the complexity of the question.
Well, I don't think the planning commission does either. Do they know how many cases there are?
But, I don't know, I didn't ask them.
Right. And, and, and we're, we're trying to strangle the little guy, uh, by doing these things. That may not be your intent, but that's the result. And, 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 uh, we, over the last 20 years, you've had a mass exodus of the locals moving outside to city limits. Uh, look at your water building, and, and look at tho, just take a look at that, and see how many of those people used to live inside the city limits. And, 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 you know, thank God they had the choice to go outside to city limits, but they can have a 600 square foot home, or 800 square foot home, and
And that's where they moved?
No, uh, they, they moved for various reasons, of, of, uh, the city kinda tell them what to do, uh, just like, uh, state and federal and everything else. Uh, ask Johnny Westerfield why he moved out, you know, ask Hal Keane, uh, Mr. Brandon, you can't ask him, he's dead, but he, uh, his, and he was former mayor. Uh, and, and, and this is, this is too intrusive on property owners in, in the Town of Mont Eagle, and, and, and the city council has the authority to say, no.
Well, my thought was that we'll talk about it in the planning, in, in the, the general plan, and we're gonna come up with a list of recommendations, and for people who are interested in affordable housing, an early and easy recommendation is gonna be to allow smaller square footage, single-family residences in some zoning districts, and so, that was my thought to rethink it. We, we may have some opportunity to rethink it beforehand, but I, I, I mean, I hope that the planning commission in itself can rethink it, and
Well, I don't think we're talking about family, okay? I raised two girls in a 1,000 square foot home, and it wasn't big.
Right.
It wasn't big enough, you ask either one of them, okay? But the reality is, and I understand what you're saying, Dean, and I respect that, but the fact of the matter is, I think it was the goal of anybody and everybody here, to try to reach some kind of a balance of, of, of not, not having, uh, 10,400 square foot homes all over, spotted all over the town, or why don't we just let them bring in campers? Just put, put a camper on.
Well, you've done that on, you took care of that on the zoning thing.
Well, yeah.
But, but I think that
Why?
We had a square, minimum square footage of 650 already, and, and
600. A family's not gonna be raised in an 800 square foot
No, but I'm talking, there, there's other instances, if you go back to, uh, Wood Adams lived up here on the highway.
Oh, yeah, yeah, little house.
You know, uh, we're, we're telling
Rick Reeves lives in a little 16 to 12 over there.
Yes, and, and we're telling these people, uh, we don't want you, we, we don't want you in our
In essence, we're saying that, but not intentionally.
Well, that's the end result.
Well, it can be for some.
Yes, and, 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 and I think it's the ultimate thing, when the, the planning commission has lots of other important issues that, that should have a higher priority than whether somebody has a 600 square foot home or an 810 square foot home.
Right.
Basically, about one, one extra room.
Right, right.
On average.
That's correct, that's correct.
And, 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 and when, when we say the planning commission, that is the Town of Mont Eagle.
Right, right.
Uh, and
But we didn't say they couldn't build a 2,400 square foot home.
Right, but, no, 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 we, and, and it's kinda like, that's what we want, we want the, 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 socially, we want all of that, but we don't want the poor folks.
Well, poor folks I don't think that's a message at all. As a matter of fact, I think that's a little unfair.
I think that's the end
I think, I'll stand on that and, and debate it any day, uh, and show, uh, you know, it is what it is.
No, that's not right. No, that's not right.
Poor people don't build 1,600 square foot homes.
That's right.
Poor people build four rooms and a bathroom, or whatever it is, and it's
Yeah.
And the trend now is coming down more, even, even the young people don't want
The McMansion states of course.
You know, and, and
Unpermeable floors. Poor people built a 10, uh, 1,000 square foot home
Yeah, yeah.
In 1977, and let HJ finance it for 33 years.
And, and they done that out of
$21,800 turnkey.
Right, and if you didn't get that loan, what would you have done?
Well, I wouldn't have had a house.
Right.
Right.
And, and
But I can't build it now for that.
No, but, but we, we need to take care of all of our citizens
Well, yeah.
Uh, and have a place for all of the residents, and even people, the vacant lots that, that are here, to try to, to do affordable housing. You, you may have some 800 square feet or 750, it, it
There's no such thing as affordable housing.
Well, it's more affordable, yes, it's more affordable than, uh, than 1,200 or 1,500 square feet.
Well, I'd be happy to continue this conversation, but
Okay, well, as a citizen, I would ask, ask the city council to take action in some way on this, uh, at the next council meeting.
Thoroughly noted.
I'd, I'd like the record to show that I agree with Dean on something, you were giving me a hard time.
Go ahead, what else?
And the other thing, uh, you approved this, uh, Southeast Tennessee Development Contract, do we have other contracts with Southeast Tennessee Development District, other than, I'm assuming that was for planning services for the planning commission?
Correct.
That was.
And that was like 7, or 8, or 9,000 dollars or something?
Ninety-seven, I had it updated, I don't
Yeah. Uh, but, but we have, we do other business with Southeast Tennessee Development District, is my understanding, uh, that, that they administer grant monies, and, and they are paid fees, uh, through that project on an individual basis, would that be correct?
Yes, and they're working on a grant to
So, so it's not like they're just coming up here and doing our planning services for 7,000 bucks, and they get no other money from the Town of Mont Eagle.
Oh, no, I'm sure there were fees built into grant application.
Well, there is, to administer them and, and oversell them, and
Travis just
And that's a common thing, it's just, my point is, uh, they're not doing that out of the goodness of their heart, they're earning monies to pay those people to do that.
Mm-hmm.
And, and when we act like, oh, we're, we're so blessed to have them, well, it, it's no different than your city attorney or your CPA, they're in the business of that, and, and for what they do, they get paid.
It's, it's a little different, it's, it's a quasi-governmental agency that receives support, so, so
And it was set up for that purpose.
Yes, we're getting a subsidized rate.
But isn't that a tool of business, that you go into business and hopefully there's a profit left?
Well, but they're nonprofit, basically, but
And cover their costs.
Well, but, but when you look at salaries and operations, you know, uh, you can make anything nonprofit.
Yes, I know.
Anyway, I think that's a little safer than that, but thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
And, and the other citizen which should be heard? Bill?
I just speak from here. One of the things we brought up in the previous administration, and I'd like to bring it up tonight, is you guys at the beginning of the meeting, um, approved minutes, and because of length of time that it takes to get up on the website to the town, I think that we should see those before you approve, and we don't see what you're looking at and what you're reading, and as time goes on, it's hard for us to remember what was actually said tonight, and then we're, we're left with just hoping you guys approve something up there when the meeting starts that actually occurred or didn't occur. And so I would, I would like for you guys to consider at least putting out a, a copy of the minutes that you're looking at when you vote to approve those, because we may not see them for months if they're not up on the website.
I have, well, I haven't been able to figure out how to get them, how to scroll at a speed so we could all read them, so I have them, uh, and that's, that's my fault.
That's not going to make that
Yeah, I mean, I could display them side by side, I, I, the, the mayor can speak to the website.
I think it's a technicality that I've been researching, we'd have to label them as draft and unapproved, and I don't know if they can be published or not, but I'm looking into that, because that's been a request from others.
Well, no
We can post the approved ones, obviously, and that would be a month after the fact, I understand that.
Yeah, there's sometimes, though, I know we have requested them, and then we were told that Garrett Haynes was doing them, and then Garrett Haynes said he wasn't, then Garrett Haynes said he was doing them, and there was just a big confusion as to where they were actually getting done, who had copies of them, and then we, you know, you go six months without being able to look at, at documentation, people tend to forget, you know, and, and it shouldn't be the burden of the public to have to sit and watch a two-hour video to figure out whether a discussion happened, you know, and we're trying to remember what month it was and what, what mark of the video that it's had.
Well, part of that has been addressed already, as far as even the approved set being on the website, but that's also a planning commission that you're referring to as well.
Right, right. Last thing I would like to bring up was that, I brought it up last night, the planning commission, I don't know if it's something I need to be asked for to get on the agenda, but I wish that you guys would consider also not allowing overnight parking for businesses that are closed.
We're researching that based on your comments last night.
What would happen, uh, what needs to happen for me to see that something's in motion, whether it's denied or not, not discussed, I mean, are you guys, I mean
Well, there'll be discussion, but nothing would be official until the next meeting where action is taken.
Right.
But, uh, your input is considered, I think you mentioned the point, if the business was closed, why would it be a parking lot? Uh, if the business is open, I guess that's their customer, how long they stay, I don't know, but that's the kind of thing, and, um, I don't know, I don't know what to tell a business when they're closed, what they do, if they charge a trucker for parking at some restaurant somewhere? Can they do that, or can't they? Should they do that, or shouldn't they?
Well, you can say that you don't allow it.
Well, that's a legal issue that I'm looking into.
Is that not a police thing?
It would be if it was an ordinance.
Only if there was an ordinance to support, exactly.
Would it have to be an ordinance, or would it be, uh, per business?
Well, it could be a complaint from the
Some businesses may allow it, some may not.
It could be a complaint from the business owner, but I think more properly it would be an ordinance.
I, I mean
I understand.
I guess someone could call and file a noise complaint, you know, and if you wanna send an officer out there, I mean, I think it'd be much easier just to have a, perhaps a vacant divorce.
Because I know some of them park at the pig overnight, you know, so I don't know if it's
Go up there, pound on a Wednesday night or a Thursday night after 1:00 in the morning, and look how many trucks are parked in this town.
That's the busiest time on the interstate, Nashville or
Because they refuse to pay the park, and, and they use this town as a parking lot.